You are now live on YouTube.
All right, thank you. Welcome to our city council meeting. It is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Wow, here we are in another month. And it's 7:00 PM. Thank you for being here. We'd like to begin, we have full council tonight. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone here willing to lead us in that?
I will.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman Hathaway. We'd also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought. Is there anyone here willing to do that for us tonight? Takeers? Our Heavenly Father, as we bear it before thee this evening, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet in the city council meeting. We pray, Father, that thy Spirit will be here. We're grateful for the country we live in, for the freedoms we enjoy, and the opportunity to live in this wonderful city in which we live in. We pray, Father, that thou would help us to be good neighbors and kind, that we may be able to do those things which will promote our city to be the, the good place it is. We're grateful for the council members and their service and the staff and for all that they do, and we ask thy blessings to be with them. We're again thankful for this place in which we live. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. All right. Are there any declarations of any conflict of interest with the agenda tonight? Okay. We have on our consent agenda tonight, the minutes of our August 18th, 2020 city council work meeting minutes, and also the August 18th, 2020 city council regular meeting minutes. Does the council have an opportunity to read those if you have? Are there any changes or corrections, additions? Okay. We also have the bills for $144,065.14. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay, we also have on the consent agenda, item 5C, approval of Santaquin City's participation in the emergency watershed protection program. Any questions or concerns with that? Okay, I'll look for a motion on consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Nika. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We have a public forum tonight. We have 30 minutes. We'd like to ask those who have signed in to stay within the five-minute limit, to make sure we have enough time. One that has signed in first, and Denise, would you come up to the microphone? State your name, please.
My name is Denise Roberg, and I have two things that I wanted to talk about. The first is I'm questioning how you can justify emailing on Monday afternoon a notice of posting for this meeting that is on Tuesday to a newspaper that prints weekly on Wednesdays. Can you tell me how that is a fair public notice?
Denise, can I give you a minute? This, this public forum is an opportunity for the public to come and, and say what's on your mind.
But that's on my mind.
Okay, but it's not our opportunity to answer those questions. We, our time is during the council meeting.
Okay.
Is in that. So you can ask a question, we will take it in consideration. Well, I, I promise you we will. Okay?
Then I wanted
Go ahead.
There is a, the first national motto was e pluribus unum. It meant, in Latin, from one, from many, one. It was a mixture of melding pot of traditions, faiths, cultures, and ideas. This is Santaquin. It's a melding pot. This could very easily be our motto. I've disagreed with the zoning on the Main Street corridor and the core plans for years, and this is why. The city should be more concerned about the rights of the property owners than how many rooftops we can squeeze in. Look at the size and terrain of our city. We will never be a walkable community. Sorry, real estate agents. The city staff and administrators have decided that it's more important to make the city have the look and feel of other towns. We're not in competition. Santaquin has its own unique history, and should be allowed to transition in its own way. It's the people that make us strong, not the color, the architecture, the types of trees that the cities approved to be planted in our yards. UDOT will be making changes to Highway 6, Main Street. Hopefully, the changes will not further hinder our small businesses. The merge lanes now are a disaster. Commuters don't merge. They feel at a personal challenge to be through first. City staff says they have no say. That's not right. The city should be totally intent on the health and safety of its citizens, not how to make the city more saleable. The core of the city is not an HOA. The property owner's rights need to be protected, and that's why the council needs to be reminded tonight. You are the elected by the people. Staff and administration should follow your lead, not the other way around. I come before you today to request tabling ordinances and changes from the planning commission meeting until the master plan has been revisited. Even the planning commission admitted these were all stopgap measures.
Thank you. All right, Doug, you're up next. How do you follow that, huh?
I follow it with, my name's Doug Roberg, and I appreciate you guys being here, and I appreciate the time you put in. But I am really having a hard time with these public notices. I can't keep up with them. I thought we had 14 days before something come on the table that we got the public notice. Has that been changed? Because that was just barely posted yesterday. I got one from the table out here.
Right.
That was my only question, is the public noticing?
Answer his question. Do you have a, how, what's the official on noticing?
Yeah, so it's 14 days in a newspaper, and we are actually
24 hours.
24 hours for the notice.
For the notice of this meeting, for the public hearing, that's 24. He's talking about the, the notice for this meeting. It requires 24 hours.
That's all we've got, is 24 hours.
We do our very best to try to get them out on Fridays before. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but 24 hours is state law.
Okay, well, like I said, thank you guys for doing the job you're doing. I'm having a real hard time staying involved with the community. I do not want to protest. I don't want to be Black Lives Matter. I hope that our voting and our public officials do the best that they can do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Doug. That's all that signed in. Is there anyone else that would like to have the opportunity to speak? I encourage you to sign in next time.
I didn't realize we could show up, so I sent an email previously, but I think I'd rather just speak than have an email written.
Would you state your name then?
My name is Brendan Bowen, and I live on 31 West, 900 South. And all of you are quite familiar with the controversy that we've had with the construction trucks, and thankfully, the construction trucks are not doing the other exit. What our dismay is that we finally got a copy of the contract between Santaquin City and the developers, and we found that the protections that we asked for years ago were in the contract, but it was never enforced. We were told that right-of-ways exist and that the trucks can go over where they want, but the, the contract clearly protects us, and it was there for a reason. And the language in it was there for the betterment of this people, the health and safety and security. It was there, and nobody enforced it. And I, I'm here to ask why. It's, there's been, people move, there's been people hurt, there's been a lot of agony, anguish, pain. We've, we've done everything we know how to get redressed until we finally had to post signs and, and just be angry. And we don't want to be that. We don't want to be those people. We want to participate in the city constructively, and we do. And we feel like we were let down. And reading the contract was disheartening. I, I think it would have been better not to have read it, but, but yeah, bad things just happened to us. But in this instance, we were let down. And I'm here to ask why. Is there a reason? We did everything that we thought we could. We asked, begged, pleaded, everything, and it was in the contract. So I really hope we can get an answer today because I think we deserve it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Not right now. We can in the meeting. No, ma'am, please.
No, please.
No. Give us
I want an answer to that man right there. You, Mr. Lee. This is a public forum.
One more, one more outburst, and I'll have, please, Chief, escort you out. This is our opportunity to talk now, okay? All right, we'll move on from our public forum. I want order in this meeting.
I wanted order years ago on my screen.
Chief, will you please? Thank you. All right, Volunteer of the Month. Something a little more happy here. Do we have? Who's doing the volunteer? Penny? Here she is. Thank you.
Okay. Let's turn to our September 2020 Volunteer of the Month. We can have Haley and Hannah come up. This is Haley and Hannah Glasner. All right, you can come right here. Thank you, girls. All right. Let me tell you a little bit about them. Haley and Hannah are being recognized as our Volunteer of the Month for a food drive. They organized and carried out on July 31st for the Utah Food Bank. As they watched the impact that COVID had on many families in our state, they felt a strong desire to help out by collecting food to donate to the Utah Food Bank. They feel that they have been very blessed through this pandemic and wanted to give back in some way to help others. For the food drive, they organized through collection stations, through town, and then spread the word through the local church leaders who willingly passed along the information to their members. They also visited each business in town and put flyers on their public boards or windows, put up a sign at the Maverick, and they posted the information through Facebook on the indoor yard sale pages. Their goal was to collect 500 pounds of food, but they exceeded their goal at 623 pounds. Haley and Hannah felt that they had a good participation from the members of our community and would like to thank those who donated. Hannah and Haley are daughters of Ben and Carrie Glasner. They share their parents with one brother. Haley is a student at Utah State University. Is that right, or was it UVU? Utah State, okay. And, oh, there you go. And majoring in business, and Hannah is at Pace and Junior High. Thank you to Haley and Hannah for being a great example to our youth and to the adults in our community. You've made a big difference in the lives of many people. Girls, would you like to say something?
Yeah.
You can go on. She's just Okay, okay. I was like, I don't know what you are. Wait, okay. Yeah, we're just very grateful that we were able to even host the food drive. Like, we did have a lot of participation and a lot of help from community and friends and family, and it was a good bonding experience for both of us, like, sitting outside Apple Valley is where we stayed most of the time. In the July heat, we had like an umbrella with us, and we went to like Arctic Circle and got food, and it was good for us to be able to bond that way. And then even as people came in and donated food, like, they would sit and chat with us for a minute and just would commend us on the work we were doing, and it was great that they were even helping, and so we would thank them in turn. And it just was a very uplifting experience, and we really enjoyed it, and it's something that we're hoping to be able to do again next year, so long as our current situations, wherever we are, allow it. So, yeah, we love doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I thought it was a lot of fun to do the food drive, and as Haley said, it was a really good bonding experience for both of us, and it makes me really happy knowing that I was able to help families with my sister by doing the food bank or the food drive. And just getting that joy make, makes me really happy even now with the stress that I'm getting from school. And I highly recommend it for others to do it, even if they're younger than I am. It was a lot of fun, and it was a great learning experience.
Thank you. Now, if you'll come up here, I want you right there.
You can't see no happy smile looking like that. We're proud to have you in the community.
On behalf of Santaquin City, we'd like to thank you, Hannah and Haley Glasner, for all your efforts, right? Bailey and Hannah. Okay, did they get another arm?
Looks good, exactly.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we also have the Pace and Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce, Michelle Wines, if you want to come up. Oh, you're gonna, all right, Ben's here. Perfect. Thank you, Ben. Come on up. We have the Business of the Month.
Come back. So we'd, on behalf of the Pace and Santaquin Chamber, we'd like to recognize NIBO Comfort as the Business of the Month. I've had the, the pleasure of serving with them on the chamber for many years. They're, they're a great member in the community. They, they, they really help. Have, have given a lot of their time in serving and, and do a wonderful job in their, in their business, and they're a five-star rated business in our, in our community and really treat those whom they serve like family. So we've, all the members of the, the chamber voted and voted NIBO Comfort as the, the Business of the Month for September 2020. And so we'd like to call them up and congratulate them on that.
And I know usually we speak before the picture, but I just want to take a moment to say, in our years of business, we've had the opportunity to work with a lot of communities, and we have loved working in the community of Santaquin, and being a part of this community, it's, has been a real gift for us to be able to participate and see how much this community is cared about by the city officials, the, the city staff, and the chamber, and everyone who sees the growth and the beauty here and is working to bring even more of it. So thank you guys for letting us be a part of it.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. It's time for awards and appointments. We have formal public hearing. I look for a motion to go into that, public hearing. So we have a motion by Councilman Miller. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We have a, a public hearing for Fifth West, NIBO School District annexation.
And Mayor and Council, this one is actually, this is part of the 14-day requirement as far as publication, not the meeting itself, but this public hearing. This one was advertised in the paper, but it was missed in, on the state website, and therefore, the whole process of the annexation is starting over. So what we are proposing is that you would open this public hearing, but then continue it into October, the October 6th meeting. And so you've already had a motion to open the public hearing. At this point, it is accepting public comment on the proposed annex, annexation of Fifth West, which is the road directly be to the west of Santaquin Elementary School, as well as the parcel owned by the school district. And the intent and purpose of annexing that is because we worked in partnership with the school district. They dedicated the land and some funds. Santaquin City met that and matched that with funding. They constructed the road to the west of Santaquin Elementary and made it so that you could drive on all four sides. That enhanced the, the safety of the overall area, making it easier for parents to pick up and drop off their children, but it also enhanced our ability to provide vehicular traffic to our rodeo grounds, and that opened it up to enhance the safety of our Orchard Day celebration. So it was a great partnership, and, but in order to maintain that road, we have to have that road actually within city limits to collect Class C road funds. So with that, we turn it over to the public for any comment that they may have with regard to this potential annexation. We will also accept public comment on October the 6th, and then, and then the council can make their determination at that time.
Okay. Anyone here that would like to make public comment on the annexation? No takers? So we want to continue this till October 6th.
So we would look for a motion to continue the public hearing until the October 6th city council meeting.
A motion. We have a motion by Councilman Nika. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. We also have, we need a public hearing for Orchard Hills 2 right-of-way vacation. I'll look for a motion to go into that.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Danny. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Nika. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Going to move that over. Jason is on, Jason was not feeling well earlier today, but he is joined us by Zoom. We appreciate him making that accommodation for us. I'm going to, actually, Jason, do you want to share? Do you have it? Do you want to share your screen?
So, Mayor and Council, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I apologize. I couldn't make it tonight. I've, I've just come down with a little cold, and I was advised that probably just be best to, to participate through Zoom. So I've, I've sent a memo to the, the Mayor and Council about this, this vacation, but for, for purposes of, of the public who, who are here interested in this particular agenda item, this, this proposed vacation came about from, from a time when the, the city was looking at a development that was, was directly south of, of this property that's proposed to be vacated. As we were looking into the details of that development, we noticed this parcel was still under the name for the, the NIBO School District, which it didn't appear like, like that was right. With the construction of Orchard Hills Elementary School, it felt like that this, this sliver should have been, should have, should have been dedicated to the city as, as part of that, that project. So we worked with NIBO School District to, to get that, that, uh, that sliver in, in the right name to have it dedicated to the city. In the past couple of months, the adjacent property owner on that same side of the street of, of 120 East, they've been working for, working on and moving forward with a proposed development plan. And as, as they've been working with the Development Review Committee, we noticed that that, that sliver is there, and, and it's, it's not really in the right-of-way of the city. It's, it's really behind the sidewalk, but it is adjoining the, the right-of-way property and, and therefore is considered right-of-way. But, but in looking at it and, and discussing it, we felt like this, this sliver of, of land is, is not necessarily needed by the city in that to, to clean things up and have the right-of-way where it is, is, makes most sense, which is generally a foot behind the sidewalk. We felt like it'd be best to just vacate this and then later convey it to the adjacent property owner. A couple of reasons for that is, is one, they're, they're going to maintain landscaping on, on that portion of property, and, and the city wouldn't want to have any sort of responsibility to do that. But two, they would need to meet setbacks from that, that sliver, the, the boundary of that sliver of property, and and if, if they, they did that, then all the units would, would seem disorganized and would be set back a little bit further than the other units that have frontage on that street. So it made sense to us to have it vacated, but there's a, a process that this, this needs to go through, and, and essentially what that is, is that the planning did it, they provided a unanimous recommendation in favor of vacating it, and then the city council needs to hold a public hearing and ultimately make, make the decision of whether or not this, this area should be vacated. Like I said before, if this is vacated, it'd be the intention to, to later convey that to the adjacent property owner in, in the form of, of a, a quick claim deed. So happy to answer any questions that you have about it, but you know, this is later on the agenda, but for purposes of now, that hopefully that's a good enough introduction for those who are interested in, in, in commenting on this during the public hearing.
Also, do you have any questions for? Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? No takers? I look for a motion to conclude the public hearing. We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, building permits, business licenses?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so I'm sure Ben's working on, on getting that, that report up to you. I guess I can start speaking to it while he's getting that up. So year-to-date, we have 250 So year to date, we have two hundred and fifty six total residential dwelling units. That's broken down. As two hundred and fourteen single family homes and forty two multi family homes. So yeah, the growth has not stopped. We are, we are just. Just getting higher and higher and 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 getting further and further away from the the grand totals that we've we've had in previous years. So. Lot of growth happening. In terms of business licenses, we have two new business licenses. They're both a non impactful home occupations. We have CB Steam Clean LLC owned by Christopher Bernhardt at two ninety five West Cottage Court. It's cleaning commercial and residential carpets. And then Dainty Dough Design owned by Amanda Dodd, five fifty four South, one ninety West. It's handcrafted clay jewelry stands and online sells.
Okay, any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Alright, moving on to. Our new business, we have item nine A. Ordinances changes related to zero six to that. Zero six zero two two thousand twenty, city council request of the planning commission to consider possible restrictions. And modifications to multifamily developments MSR.
Just give me the direction on what you'd like me to open.
Hey, I mean, you you can open up the first ordinance if if you'd like, but really, I guess, just to give a a very broad introduction to this. As the agenda item indicated, this is. This is a proposal that was was originally brought up by Councilmember Betsy Montoya, the the councilman. The city council did discuss this and and did provide direction to the planning commission to start working on this. So the planning commission spent some time on this. Several weeks, actually, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One. While there were some some changes that proposed in the MSR zone. There was a a domino effect, if you will, of of changes that needed to be made elsewhere in the code. So. So that required a lot of work to to make sure that we were finding every spot where these changes needed to be made and so that we weren't creating discrepancies and and that things were consistent with this. When the code was consistent with this self. So with that said. The planning commission held a public hearing, but then they kept finding that they needed to help hold a another public hearing for for a different section that had some pretty substantive changes in it. So we'll 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 go through these individual ordinances and talk about what those changes are. I felt like it was best and and probably would be the easiest. And most organized way to do it in five different ordinances rather than just one big one. And that way we could break it down and and and. And hit it in bits and pieces, particularly for the planning commission who is going to be spending a lot of time doing the work on this. So. With that said, the first ordinance is up and Ben has that on the screen is is accessory dwelling units. Now, the the methodology with with this section was right now we allow for accessory apartments citywide. And part of this proposal that came from from Councilmember Montoya was was to allow for what are called accessory dwelling units and and the intent was was mostly to allow for detached. Accessory dwelling units, for example, a casita or cottage or things of that nature. So. To to get terminology it to a spot where it was a little bit easier to understand for people. I proposed and 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 this is the language before you is is to change accessory apartments. To to just an over a a broad definition of of being accessory dwelling units. And then to have two subsections that would be broken down into attached, which would be like accessory apartments. And then detached, which would be those casitas cottages and those those ones that are are a new use that that the city has never had before. So a lot of the criteria and and regulations are the same. In the attached section, there's there's a lot of language there, but really what it comes down to is it's changing accessory apartment to attached accessory dwelling unit. And then there's some some language in there that 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 we felt that while it was in there, it was it was best to have a language consistent and and probably. Better explained in a way that would be. Easier for for the average resident to to understand what what is is being regulated. So. If you want to scroll down, Ben, to the detached section, attached really didn't change too much. Like I say, it's mostly just just tweaking terminology. But. And you don't need to scroll back up, Ben, but the the first thing underneath the broad accessory dwelling unit. Section, if you will, is that you can only have one per property. So that that would not allow someone to have an accessory apartment in their basement. And a detached cottage, they can only have one accessory dwelling unit period. So. Beyond that, for detached, a lot of the, I mean, we use the the. Accessory apartment code as the template for moving forward and and trying to come up with the best regulations for this use. But as you can see, first, it's it would only be allowed in the Main Street residential area of the Main Street Business District Zone. And the and the planning commission proposed that it'd also be allowed in the residential R eight zone. A criteria and and I won't go through in in a lot of detail. I know the council has probably looked at this, but for for sake of the public, some of the highlights. Are that it would it would need to be located behind the the main, the primary dwelling unit. There'd be setbacks that would be very similar to the the primary dwelling unit. The size of it is is one one talking point that the planning commission really spent some time on and and. The maximum footprint for a detached. ADU accessory dwelling unit would be eight hundred square feet. However. Now, the minimum square footage would be sixteen hundred square feet. So. Small footprint, but but you could have up to sixteen hundred square feet if you had a basement or a second level or or something like that. And then the height of it would be limited to twenty four feet. We wanted to make sure that these these detached accessory dwelling units were going to be permanent, that. They had a foundation, recreational vehicles, mobile homes wouldn't qualify as a detached accessory dwelling unit. There was some language about design and that that they wanted to look. Good and consistent with with the the main dwelling. If you want to scroll down, Ben. And then garages. And there's a lot of people who have detached garages right now and and the methodology that was was. Put in language was that. A detached a detached garage together shall not exceed the height of twenty four feet regardless of the height of the primary dwelling. So the twenty four feet is, there's a little bit more leeway there, but. And then the the maximum square footage would be sixteen hundred square feet and that would include the garage. So it went, it just made a little bit easier to to. Understand what what was allowed or not allowed. Instead of additional square footage on top of the garage space, it was just determined that sixteen hundred feet. Square feet would be all inclusive if it was attached to a garage. Parking, we would acquire two off street parking, utility meters, they could have up to two. And and most everything else in there is is very much consistent with what we already have with the accessory apartment. So. I think that's probably enough explanation of what's been talked about there and and I'm here if you have any questions and this is what what the planning commission. Forwarded to the city council and it's now here for your consideration.
I had a question. So the two off street parking spaces, does that mean on the actual property as well? It's expected that there'll be two parking spots allotted?
That's correct. So all pretty much all of our our. Parking requirements in the city is refers to off street parking. So this this would also be the same. We want to have people park off the street.
I mean, what motivated this? I'm just curious, like, just so people can. I guess build a separate cottage and rent out if they want to or have, I don't know. I guess I'm just wondering what how this transpired.
And and Jason, the way it's labeled, you can actually talk more holistically about all five of them and get to get context as to why because of the.
Yeah, and and to answer that question, you know, I think detached accessory dwelling units is is actually something that a lot of other cities have have considered. I could go on and on about about the benefits I see of them. I think they provide a lot of flexibility and frankly, I think they provide a lot of of. Of power to the our residents, to the property owners. It gives them another option to. To build something that they can use to to help family members, whether they be aging. Or whether they be, you know, young and and looking to to get become independent and whether they're newly married and and needing some some place to live to get them on their feet. Obviously, housing affordability is is a big topic in the the state legislature right now and is is frankly just a a a challenging thing for for. Any residents in the state of Utah that are are between the ages of eighteen and twenty and thirty years old. So. Like I say, for for property owners, it it allows them to 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 have a a. A use that that could provide them some supplementary income. You know, there's there's a number of wonderful benefits benefits that come from this and and I think. And and, you know. Literally what it comes down to, the reason for this is because it was it was proposed by Councilmember Montoya and she may want to speak more to this, but. I think part of the part of the thought there was was a.
We if I could. Jump jump in really quick. I think holistically speaking, what we are really talking about is limiting. High density in the MSR zone or severely restricting it and eliminating flag lots and as a concession allowing for accessory apartments. So that there is some ability to develop for those property owners that live there. I think it was more of a concessionary thing.
That makes sense to me.
Well, it's not, I mean, not necessarily. I wouldn't qualify it as a concession. I would qualify it as an additional housing option.
Okay.
Because to just like Jason was explaining. The the inventory of housing that is truly affordable and manageable for. A lot of people just isn't there. And and it's not existent. So just to allow an additional option for people in. To to develop and improve their property, thus increasing their property values. And putting those development right in the hands of the property owners in that. In that zone and in the core of town. And to allow one other additional housing option that would be more affordable for those.
Can we address all five of them at once? Do we have a separate motion for each?
I believe you can do all five at once, the way.
Okay, Jason, go ahead and go ahead to the second round and go out through five.
Okay, so Ben will pull up the the next ordinance, which is, if I remember right, pertaining to flag lots. So flag lots, this one is basically the proposals to repeal language that would allow for flag lots. My personal feeling about flag lots is is that it's just a poor form of development. To have lots wrapped around other lots. Is is just, it it works well if you have a family member, but then as time moves on, people aren't related anymore. It's it's just a. A a tricky form of development, not just for for a community development reasons, but I know that police and fire have have some concerns and it it just creates a little bit of. Complexity with with where things are located and who lives where and 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 things like that. Flag lots are are basically a subdivision with a property with. And and I think the difference with accessory dwelling units is that it would all be maintained as owner occupied. So it would be the responsibility of that landowner rather than having a different. A different property owner wrapped around your house. So. That's pretty much what's what's been proposed here is 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 to remove flag lots. And do you have any questions on this particular proposal and ordinance?
Questions, Council? Wrong number three.
Okay, the next one, I believe, is is language clarifying some some land use definitions. So this this section, obviously with with what I explained earlier with accessory dwelling units. And and having a a more clear definition of of. Accessory dwelling units that are either attached or detached, those those definitions are in there and and helps differentiate those two different types of accessory dwelling units. But also in this section, I think this is this is, I I'm looking forward to this because I've seen this many times and I felt like it's it's been confusing and ambiguous. But I think most people and most residents are going to understand multifamily as pretty much anything that's not a single family home. If it's a duplex, if it's a twin home. If it's apartments, if it's condominiums, they see that all as multifamily. Currently in our code, we have different and separate definitions for townhouses and condominiums and things like that. So. The proposal is 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 I put. Multifamily definition there and then all those. Other definitions that I think most people would consider as also being multifamily are are looked at as as subcategories. So if you want to scroll down a little bit, Ben. You'll see that we have all these different types of dwellings. I've maintained the the language for these different types of dwellings. You know, you can see dwelling condominium is crossed out there, but as a subsection under multiple unit dwelling. It's just been moved down there. And so we still have definitions for all those different types of units. But they're all under the umbrella of multiple unit dwelling, which I think will be a lot clearer and and I think is consistent with with the way. Much of the public looks at. Looks at that type of of land use. So those are the main things. If you want to scroll down, Ben, I I don't think there's anything else in there that that a. You know, there was a a couple of little scrivners errors to to make things consistent, but that's pretty much it for for this portion of of the 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 proposed ordinance change.
And comments, questions on number three? Okay, you have number four.
Yep, we're on to four. This this one is specifically to the MSR zone. This was kind of the original proposal by Councilmember Montoya is to address things in that. You know, we removed accessory residential use. Frankly, I'm not even quite sure what that means. There's not a a clear definition for it. So. To to remove ambiguity, we took that out. If you want to scroll down, Ben. This is the land use chart of what's. Permitted, conditional or accessory in that particular zone. You can see we've added a dwelling accessory unit attached and dwelling accessory unit detached. With their appropriate uses, you can see that it's non permitted in the CBD and the MSC. However, it's allowed as accessory in the MSR. We remove some of those other. Definitely defined land uses that that would fall under the umbrella of multifamily. So it just makes a little bit clear that any multifamily that includes townhomes, condominiums. Are all going to be looked at as as being conditional in any of those three areas in the Main Street Business District Zone. That's the CBD, MSC and MSR. You'd like to scroll down a little bit more, Ben? I think that might be it. There might have been one other little. Action. Nope. So. Keep scrolling down, Ben. The the main part of this MSR proposal was. Was related to multifamily and when and when it would be allowed and not allowed. If you remember, Councilmember Montoya's original proposal was to not allow multifamily on anything that was less than one acre in size. So that that still remains. However, some language was added to give a little bit more clarification and this is the proposal from the planning commission members. And that is that the minimum density of a multiple multiple family development shall be eight units per acre. The maximum density of a multiple family development shall be twelve units per acre. That was something they they came up with is what they thought was appropriate. Instead of just limiting it to to one acre in size, they felt like it was also good to to go a little bit deeper and define units per acre that allowed on that. On on that one acres. Property size. So that is it for the MSR. Is there questions, comments on this part?
I think Council. Okay, number five.
Okay, and finally, this is this is changes. I should say substantive changes that would be in the R eight zone. Obviously, there's a lot of things that we've talked about that would also apply to the R eight. The proposal to have have a detached accessory dwelling units allowed in that zone as well. So that's mostly what this is going to address. The reason why you see multiple unit dwelling added there is down below, it was it was listed as multifamily unit. I felt like it was better to move it up and to have it with the rest of the dwelling types. You know, they're in alphabetical order, so it felt like it was best to move it up there so people could see all the residential land uses in the same spot. And yeah, so it's like I said, there's there's going to be other zones that that we need to to make consistent with this. There's not substantive changes. It's mostly just. Language that needs to be cleaned up and 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 made consistent, but in terms of of substantial changes in those zones. I think we've pretty much gone through all of that and and it's now here for your consideration.
Okay, any questions, comments on number five? Okay, I look for a motion on.
So they could be individual motions if you so choose, if you wanted to make any changes, but if you're okay with all five of these. Then you would be making a motion to. Then you would be making a motion to approve ordinance oh nine oh one, two thousand twenty, oh nine oh two, two thousand twenty, nine oh three, two thousand twenty. Oh nine oh four, two thousand twenty, and oh nine oh five, two thousand twenty, all related to the items that Jason just mentioned.
Look for a motion.
I just, I have a question real quick. Um. Can you explain? Uh, can you explain the reason why we are doing this today with the general plan coming forward, the general plan? I went through the planning commission, used the majority of them. I, I don't have a picture. I thought they did a really long job, but they're doing a really good job on discussing items, but can you explain why we're doing this now? Instead of.
I think, and, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Councilmember Montoya. I think this initially started because of the three, four, one development that was coming into the MSR zone. And um, and with that, it was creating an, an undue impact on the development, uh, uh, on the neighboring. Um, home and property owners along that MSR zone. And recognizing that the general plan would be coming, there was some concern that we needed to step in and ensure that that type of development didn't move forward in the interim, so. Clearly, the words used, um, a stopgap measure is really to, to put certain restrictions in in the MSR zone. But then, um, as the planning commission and as the council has considered this and, and whatnot, it's kind of ebbed and flowed to be able to. Um, address such things as the accessory dwelling units, the flag lots and whatnot. Um, recognizing that full well that the, the general plan as it proceeds and goes forward may in fact. Uh, necessitate coming back and making modifications, but these will um. Uh, protect the interests of the, the city in the interim. If that probably made a sound.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, that's correct. I, um, I was concerned about additional. Sideways triplexes coming into the fore, and um, I'm hearing from residents who live. Um, next door to where that building is going to be built and um, expressing their concerns and um, his pleasure about that, and so. Um. At the time, we still had not put the general plan out to bid, um, done an RFP for that. Um, we were in the process of creating the RFP. Um, we now have received proposals, reviewed proposals. The plan is going to get started, or the process for the plan is going to get started. Um, but in the meantime. I, I wanted to give us a chance to, to do the plan without building permits for sideways triplexes. And that, that are on a quarter acre lot. And um, I, I, so with staff's help, I put this proposal together, and I felt like it was the best. Measure to put in place, because currently in the MSR zone, Main Street residential zone, there are no lots that meet. No single lots that meet these requirements. None. Um, if a developer wanted to come in under this proposal and build multifamily, they would have to purchase. From two property owners that join together. And um. And so I feel like that still allows property owners in the core to. Develop their land or sell to the developer. If two of them want to get together, it gives them authority and control over their own land. But still gives the city a chance to kind of catch up. Um, by giving us time to complete the general plan. So that, that's why.
I agree. Thank you. Any other comments? Let's still accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve all five of the ordinances as discussed by Mr. Vaughn.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Meekum, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion on these resolutions? And ordinances, yeah. Ordinances, okay. No further discussion? Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Meekum.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
And Councilman Norton. Thank you. That was unanimous. All right, turn the page. Uh, item nine B, ordinance zero nine zero six, two thousand twenty. An ordinance approving the vacation of right of way at Orchard Hills Two. Approximately hundred and twenty East Highland Drive. We've already heard about it.
Baron Council, we've talked about this. Uh, I guess the last step is, is, is that the council so chooses to vacate this property, they need to do so by ordinance, so we have an ordinance prepared for you, and, and. I don't think anything need more needs to be said about this unless you have questions for us.
Any questions or comments? I look for a motion.
I'll motion. Two. Voice for goodness sake. Approve ordinance nine B two. Oh wait, ordinance. Zero nine dash zero six, twenty twenty, bam.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Meekum. Any further discussion on this ordinance?
No, it makes sense.
If not, Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Miller. Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Item nine C, ordinance zero nine zero seven, two thousand twenty, and ordinance enacting Santaquin City Code Title Four, Chapter Five. Regarding Public Assemblies and Special Events.
Um, Mayor Council, we, we uh, um. Of course, have events from time to time, and we have been trying to mature the processes we have within our organization for the evaluation of, of events. And also to give better uh, regulations and. Uh, more um, backing to our law enforcement officers, and so um, with regard to. Uh, protests and counter protests, how we handle events. Um, and, and just in general, how, how we take things through a more mature process. So, um, this ordinance is, ordinance was developed by our city attorney in conjunction with our chief of police, please. Both are here this evening and could uh, provide comment on that.
Okay. Uh, comment, or do you want to answer questions?
If you have an answer.
You have any questions? Also. Any comments? You feel like we're going to be okay with it?
Well, it's, it's an ordinance that uh, I think is uh, broad, covers law areas. Uh, specifically with the uh, with the permitting uh, process, but also governs uh, uh. Procedures for what types of events require uh, what, what types of guidance. What types of conditions and permits and those kinds of things, while still there is a clause in there that allows uh, for. Um, gatherings or demonstrations uh, of a spontaneous nature or nature. Uh, to comply with the constitutional requirements.
Okay. Chief, if you get it.
Yes, and I, I'm not sure how closely y'all read this, but uh. You know, we've never, this has been a, a project for quite a few years, and it, I know uh. Ben mentioned demonstrations and so forth, but this would also pertain to block parties. We get quite a few calls to block off streets for block parties, and we've never had any sort of permit process or. Uh, you know, or every, any other private event, sporting event or something like that, so this just uh, gives us some guidance on, on what those folks need to do to. To get the proper permits. And I believe it'll be passed through each uh, department head for approval.
Very similar to how we handle our, our traffic enforcement requests, where we are now taking it through instead of a political, it's more of a technical coming through the Development Review Committee. This would be evaluated by our, our police chief, our fire chief, our public works uh, department, our building official. Um, uh, and all the technical uh, elements being evaluated, our, our administrative staff to ensure that. Um, all areas of the city are, are protected with, with these type of events going forward, and all things are considered by all departments. Nobody's surprised.
You know, if, if you look at it, there are a lot of different uh, city facilities that are available uh, for events. Uh, this covers such a variety. Of those different kinds of events and gatherings, all the way from as uh, chief describes, a, a block party where someone wants to close a, a cul-de-sac for a gathering of. Uh, fifty people for a very short time, uh, to detailing uh, and uh, requesting information for parades. Uh, for a major uh, events. If someone wants to rent the, the rodeo grounds. Uh, providing guidance for what's required there, and uh, at the same time, one of the, one of the biggest, I think. Um, aspects of this ordinance is that it uh, allows for city services to be um. Allocated in a more orderly and more efficient manner. Uh, when you've got big events, uh, you've got police services that are typically required. Uh, uh, fire department and EMS that have got to understand what's going on. And where they're likely to be needed, uh, those kinds of things. So those are the things that we try to address in this ordinance. But again, if you've got any questions, happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I like, I like, I like to make a comment on what Ben said. I, I guess the question would be. If somebody puts in for a permit for an event. Who, you said, who would, who would approve it or disapprove it?
So it would need to go through an entire process unless it's a spontaneous event, right? Yes. But there is, uh, we've detailed in here that there would be uh, an events review committee that would be established. That would consist of the uh, you know, chiefs and uh, uh, these people, uh, I think five different members. That would be reviewing, uh, who understand uh, what the content of the ordinance is. Uh, the purpose in uh, setting these things out, what kinds of things are required, and then decide what's appropriate under what circumstances.
That's kind of where I was going with it. Yeah, I mean, we, I, I'm glad you clarified that because I was going, what, well. How could you turn anybody down technically unless it's breaking, you know, safety protocols or putting people in danger, you know what I mean? But. Brett answered that question, so.
Okay, any other comments? Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Brett.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, uh, do you accept a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Set for the zero nine zero seven, two thousand twenty. According to the act of the city code Title Four, Chapter Five, regarding public.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by. Councilmember Montoya. Any, any further discussion on this ordinance? If not, Councilmember Meekum.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilman Miller. And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Item nine D, resolutions related to the construction of the new city hall near the city museum. The first one is Resolution zero nine zero one, two thousand twenty, a resolution approving the purchase of real property. Zero nine dash zero six five dash zero 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 one. And zero nine dash zero six five dash zero 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 six. Approximately eleven west, one hundred south.
Okay, and this is actually um, two items uh, together.
Let me do the other one.
Sure.
And item D two. Which is Resolution zero nine zero two, two thousand twenty, a resolution approving the purchase. Of real property zero nine dash zero six five, there's zero 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 two. And zero nine dash zero six five dash zero 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 seven. Approximately one forty eight south center street.
So, Mayor and Council, we're um, excited to see this project materialize and move forward. Um, but ultimately, uh, the council made the determination to put the new city hall. Uh, near to our old city hall over by the museum. However, um, in doing so, um, we were looking at the different sites, and, and maybe I'll just go ahead and read this memo. Pursuant to your direction and authorization, Santaquin City is negotiated in good faith. With the owners of real property along the corner of Center Street and First South for the construction of the new city hall. The intent and purposes of acquiring these parcels is to facilitate construction of the new building such that it will provide the following. Concurrent use. Construction should not require the displacement of the current uses on the existing property, each of the seniors, the veterans, the museum. And recreational programming. Um, number two, the preservation of field space. As the community continues to grow with infield development, the preservation of greenfield space in the core of the community has grown in priority. Uh, that land will become more and more precious over time. And last, prominent presence, um, the building site location should create an inviting, long-lasting aesthetic appeal. That will be enjoyed by its residents for generations to come. Hence, the building facing Center Street will provide a prominent presence while also creating a bookend, the museum building on the west end of the same block. It is anticipated that the new building will be designed and similarly modeled after the construction of the Santa Clara City Hall. Uh, with the use of brick instead of sandstone, and that's outlined right here, a picture of it. And the proposed layout, as it's laid out right here, uh, this is First South, and this is Center Street. It would be on the corner, very similar to the museum being on the corner on the other end. Um, but uh, because this is new construction, um, instead of going into an existing unit, it is anticipated that there will be a future addition needed. However, we are planning for um, a multi-use space that could be used uh, for community gatherings, including our seniors and veterans as well. Um, so placing it on the corner allows for all of this to be constructed before we undertake any improvements. Um, or modifications to the museum and old city hall building. To continue the, the uh. The uh, memo, to facilitate the design and construction of the proposed facility, your formal approval of the acquisition of the property is needed. With your approval, funding for these purchases will come out of the bond proceeds as budgeted. Uh, note, the total project budget is anticipated to be seven point one million dollars. Um, plus any grant funding obtained for possible enhancements such as uh, backup emergency operation center. Uh, audio/video equipment for enhanced public transparency and participation, encouraging social distancing, emergency power backup, et cetera. Um, and should the council so choose, there's a recommended motion there for your consideration.
Okay, any questions, thoughts? Uh, accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve reservation zero nine dash zero one, two thousand twenty. A reservation approving the purchase of real property. Zero nine dash zero six five, zero 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 one, and zero nine dash zero six five, dash zero 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 six. And to approve reservation zero nine dash zero nine, dash two thousand and twenty. A resolution approving the purchase of real property. Zero nine dash zero six five, dash zero 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 two. And zero nine dash zero six five, zero dash zero 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 seven. Utilizing budget bond proceeds for reimbursement, as seen as they become available.
I have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do we have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Bowman. Any further discussion on these two resolutions?
I'm sorry, uh, Norm noticed a typo. It's Resolution zero nine zero two, two thousand twenty.
You amend that motion?
Good job.
I amend the time alter to replace zero nine dash zero nine dash two, but with zero nine dash zero two, dash two thousand.
You willing to amend your second?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? If not, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
And Councilman Miller. Thank you. Unanimous. Item nine E, discussion of possible action regarding website and codification. Right, Ben? Services with. Muni code. Cod, right? No?
It depends on if you're from Boston or New York, whether it's.
Codification and not codification, so it's got to be.
Depends on if you are a Bills fan, a Patriots fan. I didn't say Giants.
Uh, all right. Go ahead. Hey. All right. Let's have it.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so this came about just because um, if you read the memo, we just have experienced a decreased quality. Of uh, service from both our website and our codifiers. Um, none of our ordinances have been codified since October of two thousand nineteen. Um, this is due to Sterling Codifiers being bought out by uh, American Legal Publishing. Um, and so I believe that company just uh, doesn't have the same quality of customer service. And then our website, just in working with Penny, she has a lot of complaints from the beginning. Since we first started with them, mainly we don't have a lot of control over. Just some backend stuff with the site that Penny would like control over, and also. The, I mean, the prices just double what MuniCode is offering us annually. I mean, obviously, there's startup costs at the beginning, like there always is with a website, but. The annual cost down at the bottom, you can see our, you know, just about, just about half of what our current service provider is annually. And then our codification services, it's self-codification software. So Jason seemed really thrilled about it, you actually don't have to send it out. So you can actually just make the changes of the code within your website itself. And then it will automatically create ordinances, and then it can come to me to be able to print and get that out. It's just a smoother process and both the website and codification service do provide for a greater degree of control for the city, which I'm a big fan of. And then the final piece is meeting an agenda management software. This goes along with our website design and hosting. So this is just a feature that allows for more accessibility to our agendas and minutes. And it just, it ties in really well to all the softwares included because, for example, once Jason is in the self-publishing codification software and he makes an ordinance, then it goes to me. And then if it goes to me, then it can go into the agenda already, and then it just all ties into each other because it's one. One company that has different departments, different services that they provide. There was something that I did like also, I wanted to mention on the website design and hosting, the website design is. Far superior with its search engine capability, it has a really great feature where you can search and filter. What you're looking for to more easily find what you need on the website. It's just way superior to what we have right now. So I just recommend MuniCode for all three of these services, just to help increase efficiency. Lower our cost, allow for more transparency and.
I think it's also important to note that. The rollbacks were here complaining tonight because of the twenty-four hour posting, and that is state code, that is. We are meeting that minimum standard. And of course, it used to not be as much of an issue when we are holding meetings on Wednesday, we're holding them Tuesdays, we're kind of coming in. Working night and day to try to prepare for a lot of these meetings, and so we're being compressed on both sides. Having an agenda meeting software, management software allows for us to. Make these updates and automatically put them into the agenda right up front, so the agenda is being created on the fly, we're not having to do it on the weekends or. Friday nights, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday mornings, whatever happens to be to get the agendas out and to you. So that's going to help with the enhancement of transparency. But it also can tie to our camera system that we are going to be installing. So that you can click on an agenda item and it will zoom you forward to that portion of the meeting. And people can go to the portions that they want, so. Once again, this is to encourage our overall transparency and take the next step to try to. To make this a better process and involve the public even more.
Absolutely, I think the public's, I think the public's going to be really happy with the ease of access around the website and being able to find meetings and then videos of meetings, which are going to be. Also on that agenda, on that meeting software, so just a lot of good things. So if you have any questions, I can.
Any questions, Mayor? I do too. I think so, I want to get a really office. Okay. Can we pay for it? All right, that's the question we need answered. All right, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. Recommend that the city contract service provider, MuniCode, for number one, website and posting. Two, codification.
See, I meant the other one.
I defer in all things to our principal and educator in the room.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Meekum, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Montoya. Any further discussion, oh, we don't need it on this one, do we? No, this is an action, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item nine F, acceptance of annexation petition for the proposed Nebo School District and five hundred west annexation. Do we have to wait and hold the next one in October before we accept this?
We do, because of the posting of three times, it does need to, we're just starting over the process, so we're a hundred percent clean, so.
So you want a motion to table this?
No, not table.
Oh.
No, 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 this is a motion to approve, to accept, which starts the process over.
I'd like. Yeah.
Sorry, we have to start this. That was my fault. I did not post on the website. I did some oversight on my part. But I learned value of the lesson.
Okay, thank you.
You're up. We all.
Yeah, how can we be man at that? Thank you. All right, I look for a motion. On the certification, no, acceptance of the petition.
A motion to accept.
I motion, I'll motion to accept. Annexation petition for the proposed Nebo School District and five hundred west annexation.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bowman, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Item nine G, notice of certification of the five hundred west Nebo School District annexation petition.
Mayor, this one doesn't require any council action, we just put that on the agenda so that it's official that we. It, so that it's on record that it has been certified.
So you need a motion?
No motion, no action.
All right. Moving on, nine H, resolution zero nine zero three two thousand twenty. A resolution approving a partial second spending plan. For the use of Santa Clara City's allocation of CARES Act federal funding.
Mayor and Council. Open that one up really quickly. With the CARES Act dollars, the council approved its first. There we go. Share that. The council approved its first spending plan. We're excited to report that the public has been thrilled to see the. Business stimulus program moving forward, today was the first day when people can go out and spend those dollars locally and help our local businesses. The council also approved many expenditures in the first round, this is the second round, we met as. Department directors in those affected by. The use of these funds, Councilmember Miller was in attendance while we had these discussions. And basically, we are going from the green items to the yellow and orange items for your consideration and approval. And we dramatically changed them and scaled them back because we can utilize. Our payroll dollar, our CARES Act towards payroll for our first responders, and that frees up general fund monies that could be used for other things. So those things that we are moving, recommending that you consider moving forward with. Would be three good laptop computers that could be checked out for any of our employees that might be working from home for quarantine purposes. A hundred candlesticks and ten traffic control A-frames for our public safety to direct things such as our. Spontaneous testing site that popped up Friday afternoon that we knew about a few minutes before it opened up. We have the retrofit of the fire department's mechanics room as a decontamination room. And putting in those extractor units, they're super high-end washer and dryer units that are able to wash out, wash turnout gear. And decontaminate those. As well as add a ventilation system into our fire base to clean out the air system again. To take care of our first responders. And with that said, this resolution is before you for your consideration, parcel spending plan number two.
Okay, any questions? I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a resolution, a motion to accept resolution authorizing partial second spending plan. Which resolution, right, resolution zero nine dash zero three dash two thousand twenty. Resolution authorizing a partial second spending plan for the use of Santa Clara City's out pitch CARES Act.
We have a motion by Councilman Meekum, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Finally got to you. Item nine I, presentation regarding possible enhancements to the Summit Creek Irrigation Pond number two. And the future Santa Clara City portion of the Central Utah Water Project. Former Mayor Dan Olson.
Okay. We're honored to have our special guest there. And sit right here, and that way you can, they can see you and you can talk to it and have a microphone. And if you, if you want to use the box, you can. Move over and I'll move over, and you, you will probably sit right here. And if you'll run next to it, I'd pick you. Okay. Do I have to leave the, the McDonald's ordering thing on?
I'd like an order of fries with that. If you don't mind. It is a pleasure to be here. You know, I, I have missed this room just a little bit, but not a whole lot. I love working on city things and I appreciate the trust that you have in us. On the agenda, on the agenda, you didn't list Troy, Troy worked with me, we also worked together for a number of years, Troy Peterson. Has a lot of talents, and so. We wanted to make sure that we were pulling this together and coming up with a basic understanding. So that when we presented this to you, it made a lot of sense, now. We've talked to the mayor, we've talked to Summit Creek Irrigation. So I want you to know this isn't just. We're not underway, we're actually way underway, at least to the point we have people that are talking and working, okay? Now, I wanted to start by saying, it's been forty years ago. This past month that I started with reservoirs for Santa Clara. I've proposed over four different reservoirs in Hole Canyon, I proposed one in the early. Nineteen eighties that actually changed the wilderness boundary, we would have had to done away with the whole canyon access other than wilderness walking from the bottom up. But we were able to redraw because I had already submitted all the applications for the first reservoir, which was above Kenny's flat. We drew all the boundaries, I'm one of the few that probably still know where all the boundaries are for the wilderness up the canyon. We, we've looked at the reservoir project and a few others. Shoot, we even did one with golf course in it once, so. I want you to know that way down deep in my heart, and Troy can probably tell you a few things too about it. Water is a resource, water is gold, and, and. My love for the stream water and everything else that we have goes back to my early, early childhood when my grandfather was the water master. And he took me around changing headgates before I was five or six years old. So we, we owned fifty acres down the fields and I was a farm boy and everything. You want me to talk closer?
Yeah, and we were missing you off the camera too, we need to see your good luck.
Okay, let me get to the, to the bottom of this. There is a resource that sits out west of town, that's called Reservoir Number Two. Reservoir Number Two, if you kept up with all of your flood mitigation and everything else, it's the first repository for everything that. That goes west out of the flood control in the mouth of the canyon now, so it becomes a bigger catch-all than it used to be. So how do we do that and how do we, we utilize the water that's coming into us from CUP? You know, for many years when I was here before, CUP was still a dream. You know, but so was social security when I was younger, and I'm soon going to get that, so. We are also going to get CUP water. And it is not only knocking at the door, you have to stop for it if you're driving to Payson along the highway. And it is going to be here. Whether we do something about it now or not. And, and so as we discussed this and as we looked at it, we thought, where is the best place to put it, where is the water coming? What are we going to be able to do and what can we add to it? So why don't we pass those around? And I want to give you each a map, and we're going to go to this second one up here in a minute, but I want you to look at the first one, this is. This is where we started. And we looked at all of the property owners that was around Reservoir Number Two, this property that's in dark. Is Summit Creek Irrigation and Canal Company property. They own it. They own the reservoir, they control the water that's in there, water that comes from the canyon during flood season throughout the winter time. And even during irrigation systems run through there, there's a single pipe outlet that runs from that that they utilize that only goes down to. Fourth North. And across all of town at Fourth North, so. You don't get a lot of use out of it the way that it is presently. Now, one of the presentations we made in the past for a reservoir was to utilize the upper piece and. The more Troy and I looked at this, we understood there were some real good opportunities that lay around this. Present reservoir that we could probably utilize. And all of a sudden make Santa Clara not only a place where we could utilize the water, but a destination. Because it will add recreation, it will add all kinds of things, and so I'd like to talk about that for a few minutes and. Jump in here if you, you want me to, you know. We looked, we looked first at where could we go in there and have access to everything? Well, the city already owns a right-of-way that goes down to a gravel pit that overlooks it from the Red Barn. We've almost got access to it coming in that way. The city owns a lot of the property down where the new soccer fields are. Well, that, that looks like a little soccer island out in the middle of a whole bunch of weeds, and it is. But we want to do something else with that, what can we do with it? Well. We developed this a little bit more, what, what does it take? To make Summit Creek happy with the water that they have because they own that, they control that, and, and you need to realize that's there. But what could we do with the rest of it? So Troy and I worked out a place, and if you want to go to that other PDF. Where we could actually split this reservoir in half and start doing some augmentation, okay? And. We, we wanted to build a new dike that went across it east to west. From the existing dike over to just north of the gravel pit that sits on the, what Aaron Jones and I used to call White Bass Point. The only place you could catch white bass on the reservoir when we were kids. And then Troy came in and he started putting my numbers together with me, okay? So knowing the depth of the output on the reservoir as it is. And then we went through and did some measurements of, of the reservoir itself, and the south end is just. Flat. It doesn't take much and it's, the water's gone from there, but, but what you get when you get. Water spread out with not a lot of depth is a loss in evaporation, it's called pan numbers. And you, you develop how much of that water you can save by calculating pan numbers as well as percolation and everything else, so. Troy took all of my crazy ideas. So, uh, Troy took all of my crazy ideas and was able to, to put in there the, uh, and you'll see the black line about halfway down. That is where the existing, or where the new, um, dike would go across. In that dike, there would be a spillway. In that dike, there would be a new control. But the, the real secret to all of this, and if, if you can, if, imagine how much water we're gonna get when we get CUP. Uh, imagine one acre of ground about nine hundred feet deep. Okay? So you gotta think about this in a little bigger numbers than we have. Now, utilization takes it, there's a whole bunch of other things that happen. But we decided that it would be kinda cool to look at, how much of that dirt could you move away? Create different dykes, how, how much higher would it have to be to hold the water? And what could you do with this to make a destination out of it as well as utilization? Okay? So I calculated all of the, the dig it out part. And Troy put it into this plan. Now, I'd like, if you would just take a minute and just talk about the places where we, we want to look at, and then we'll go on from there, is that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just go over that and do it while it's right there.
Okay, yeah. All right, so when you get this PDF, I apologize for that blue, it's a little bit bright, sorry, it's eye-catching. Um, now, I'll give you a minute to get one of those. Maybe, maybe three minutes, Dan wants to talk to each of you.
He's got that ability.
He does. So we looked a little bit, you can see there's an access road coming in, the one that says access to the drainage road. Um, that's the one that would come in, it's, it's almost right into the barn entrance there to the red barn. And then there's the one going out to Summit Ridge Parkway. That one lines up with, yeah, yeah, that one right there lines up with, um, some of the things that the city's got in place and goes out to Summit Ridge Parkway. And then we looked at several different uses, just as a, you know, just as some, some ideas to put out there. Um, some camping areas, as Dan mentioned, there's, there's the sports fields that are there. Sometimes in other places, we've seen that where, where there's camping areas near a sports field where people can come and camp and stay and, and watch the sports. That's, that's something that I know my grandparents have always enjoyed doing is watching sporting events and it really doesn't matter who is playing, my grandpa liked to watch baseball, so I know we're not playing baseball there right now, but, um, then you can see some day use areas, um, could be picnic tables, civilians, you know, different amenities there. Um, there's some small dash roads in between those that you can't really see on this map, they're kind of the same color as the aerial. And then there's some grass area and then the sandy beach that would taper down into the water, there's kind of a, an approximate water line there to give you an idea. All of these areas are really just kind of a, kind of a shot in the dark at this point, you know, we'd have to tie some of it down. Um, services areas, you know, that could go from as little to as much as the city wanted to put in there as far as what was in there. There could be restrooms, there could be a little shop for treats and drinks and those kind of things. There could be, depending on what you're gonna do with the camping area, where you're checking the camping areas. A lot of different options that are available there for things that could go into a place like that. Um, that's kind of that in a nutshell, any questions? Can you wanna add?
Yeah, I'll take it just a little further if you want.
Okay.
Okay. What, what these would end up being are fifteen-foot-deep reservoirs, which takes the pan numbers way down. Uh, evaporation kinda goes away, especially if you control the seepage by lining both of these out. Uh, all of a sudden, you have two very good reservoirs. Okay? The one on the north, much deeper. And, and, uh, the output of the reservoir on the north end stays exactly the same. The overflow of the reservoir, exactly the same. You may wanna improve it over time, the things that are in there are kind of old. However, all you're doing is digging it down and moving dirt around. The mayor knows how to move dirt. Okay? If there's anything he knows, he knows how to move dirt. And, and there's a lot of ways that you can do stuff like that. When I was in the council before, we moved a lot of dirt using the National Guard. And it was a little cheaper in doing some of those things because all we had to do was pay for their fuel and buy them a lunch. And you got them for two weeks and they moved a lot of dirt. Now, there are some places in here that are really good for fill areas. So if you went back to the first map that you had, the fill areas are in the, uh, properties of, that are near, uh, Brooke Taylor's, down through by Dennis Barnes. But also in the, that little, uh, section that, right there where he's got the hand on that, you could fill that thirty feet deep, forty feet deep, and level out all of those things or terrace it around to make it uh, into, uh, an effective camping area. But you can do all kinds of things with this. Um, the neat thing about it is you've got places close by, you move the, the dirt. Very easy that way, you're not crossing roads, you're not getting out on the interstate, you don't have to cross a highway, you don't have to go anywhere else, you don't get on an asphalt road, you go dump it where there's a little canyon that sits there. And we fill it up and we use it for camping area. Um, the things that this will bring, you know, are, are really only held by your imagination. It can enhance your sports, it can bring people in. I mean, if, if you went up to Spanish Fork Canyon and looked at the little reservoir that they put up there and put concrete in to line the one end, you can't hardly stand in that pond because there's so many people that are there. The other thing is where this can be maintained at a, at a good depth, we have nine hundred acre-feet of water that's coming in. We also have a thirty-inch discharge at three hundred PSI. Um, if all of a sudden you wanted to do some investment, uh, you can put a turbine at the end of that and generate power for over six months of the year. That would pay for maybe the city's power for a year, I, I don't know how much. Three hundred, three hundred PSI with a thirty-inch, you need to have a, a civil engineer jump on this, but that's probably the low end of, uh, turbine output, but it's good. Now, this is all type-one water that's coming out. Type-one water is creek water. Okay? Well, magically, so is our turd mill has type, type-one water output. And that's eight hundred, eight hundred gallons per minute, what's that, eight, eight hundred thousand a day? Okay? So, uh, now you can take what everybody was a little bit worried about and instead of putting it into that pond and creating a place for algae bloom, you can stick it into the, uh, the new reservoir, whatever you wanna call it. The second, the reservoir on the south of Reservoir Number Two. The only thing that you really have to change with Reservoir Number Two, other than move the dirt around, is lift the elevation of the dike up two feet. Okay? We're not talking about incredible things that we can't manage. You're moving dirt, you have all of this capability. There's two other things I really wanna mention. One was, how do we get the water, what do we do with it to get it out of there? Uh, north, northeast of Reservoir Number Two is a well site that Summit Creek drilled well, um, down there by the Bear Dolls Little Property. We could, uh, tie a, a, uh, pipe into there, it's shown on this one. Is tied straight into the same one, you could put a, an auxiliary pump in there and push the water back up into town if you wanted it to, to be able to move some of that water around in conjunction with Summit Creek, if you needed to. Um, and keep in mind, I think Santaquin City is, uh, the largest shareholder in Summit Creek anyway. So one of these days, you'll probably own it all. And, uh, that would be good. Now, I wanna tell you, I have talked to a couple of engineers about generating power. And they think, wow, this is fun. Some, some way to bring power in that's, you're not having to do anything but turn on the valve. Okay? And you can generate some money. Or offset your own costs. All right? Second thing, you're bringing people in that's going to make this a destination. If you put camping spots in there, places where they can swim, uh, concessions where they can rent a kayak or bring a kayak in, don't put motorboats on this, it's not big enough. The next thing is, and Troy and I talked about this, was what a wonderful place to have a fishing hole. When I was a kid, that was full of carp and catfish and white bass, hence White Bass Point. And a trout now and again that got away from the creek, but ended up down there. The waters that are in our reservoir, when, when the Division of Wildlife have dumped a few fish in to just see, the fish just explode, they grow, they double in, in a month or two, or two. And by the end of the year, they're huge. And, uh, there's good feed out there, there's all kinds of things for it. Well, that's in the old reservoir, you put more depth to it, there won't be catfish and carp and other things, these are trout. The Division of Wildlife have assured me that they would be party to it. And I don't think that you're gonna be left alone with a whole lot of things, there'll, there'll be people that will want to join in with this. The plan has a long ways to go. Uh, we, we talked about flood mitigation and I, I'm sorry, I didn't get back with you, Norm, I appreciate what you said. Uh, I'm concerned with floods. And I know most of you have no clue what, what the, what our stream looks like when it's flowing as high as Provo River. And, uh, we don't have the ditches down through town and we don't have ways to get it out. Summit Creek is ecstatic that, that we are proposing to keep this a part of the flood control to help mitigate everything that happens with the canyon. And with the canyon all burnt out and no way to hold it back, uh, a fast thaw will be much worse than anything that we had seen prior to this because there's nothing up there to hold it back. And, uh, you know, I've, I've hiked across those mountains and recently I've hiked across them. It's, it is one of those things we need to be prepared for. The discharge of the flood basin brings it right through the middle of the south exit and right across, and I don't know that any of you saw it in eighty-three, when I was in the city council and we fought that, I was on a caterpillar trying to keep it to where we could hold it from washing out on the freeway. There's so much water that comes across there and, and, uh, gravel and everything else. It's, it makes a mess, it's dangerous and it shuts everything down, and it will. We shut the freeway down for a while. So, uh, having a good flood plan, this incorporates it, Troy and I talked about that as one of the first things. How do we get the water into the reservoir so that we can move it through the overflow of the new reservoir into the old reservoir two, over it and down into reservoir one? And this plan, you can easily adopt it. And, uh, we, we do have places in here where we can bring that water in and put it right into these reservoirs and move it across. Now, you'll get dirt and other things that come with it, that's life. Sure, a whole lot easier to clean out a lot of debris and silk than, uh, the other end. Uh, I believe we looked at, at a whole bunch of ways that you can do this. I think we're pretty, pretty clear that, uh, it becomes a, uh, real boon to the city. Um, when, when I presented this to, um, Summit Creek, they were all in favor of it. Now, keep in mind, they own the property and that is something that you guys all need to be prepared to work with. I enjoy working with Summit Creek, I know them, I was on the board, I've been a shareholder since I was a kid. And so, I know how they work, I know what, what they think, but I also know a lot of what you people do, because I've been in your shoes. And, uh, I, I believe since we have water coming, I stood, I stood on the dam of Upper Stillwater, uh, forty miles north of Duchesne just two weeks ago and told my, my wife and my brother and sister-in-law how that water goes from there and will come out at Reservoir Two. And it was cool to see, and especially since I got to work on that dam years ago too. So, anyway, uh, that is in a nutshell, everything, I could bore you to death with gallons and acre-feet of water and how much dirt to move, but really you wanna get that from the engineering study and you need to start looking that direction now, that's what I think. If you need a project manager or somebody that would love to just help you, you know, I can think of a guy or two. But, uh, I know. I, I love this and it's, it's not like I've never, uh, proposed a dam, but this one's actually gonna work. And it can work for the betterment of this whole area. And for the city in multiple ways, for the neighbors of it, in many ways, it will open doors for us to work with, uh, the farmers as well as so many others. So, uh, I appreciate your trust in us and, uh, giving us a chance to look at it and to present an idea. Is this the way it will end up? I don't know. But there is property in here that you could look at that would, uh, enhance this even more, there are other things you could do, but at least this is the jump-off point. And, uh, appreciate it. Do you, do you have any questions or?
Any thoughts?
If I may, so I, Mayor and Council, we've talked about before, um, you know, we, this, this is probably one of the prime candidates that we have to put together a feasibility study. So Dan and Troy have done a lot of work that could go into that, but, but a feasibility study would look at things like operational, you know, what water, where, when, how, floodwater, flood mitigation, the dike, the, the energy savings that could be there potentially, there, there's a lot of different nuances that would need to be looked at to, to do this. And so I would, I would say that probably the next step is to, to do a full-on feasibility study to, to look at what the benefits could be to the city, what the benefits could be to the residents, to the irrigation company, et cetera. I, I think that's probably the next step. Now, I don't know what cost on that, that's probably something that we would need to, to maybe put out an RFP to engineering firms to be able to, to look at that feasibility study and what's that gonna cost? I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Feasibility studies, I've seen anywhere from fifteen thousand to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't think this one's gonna be on that north end of that, but I don't think it's gonna be on the south end of it either. I think you're gonna be, you know, you, you could spend twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars looking at a feasibility study to, to really look at some of the questions that I'm sure that all of us have now from, from Dan's presentation of where this can go and how it can benefit and what the- Where this can go and how it can benefit and what the, what, what the actual, some, some actual costs would be. Again, Dan's looked at gallons and cubic yards of dirt and all that kind of stuff. This feasibility study would look at. Everything from, okay, how much can we put there for the camping and how much could we even charge for camping and all? I mean, you know, operational costs for year over year over year. Those, all of those questions would be and could be answered by a feasibility study. I, I believe that that's probably where we would go next.
I, I think there's a lot of things that you get out of this too, because that would incorporate an environmental impact. That would incorporate the studies that, that you really, really need to align yourself with in order to. Just get the permits, because even though you only put that, that dike up two feet. It still requires a dam permit.
Dam safety, huh?
Yeah.
So, so the other thing that a, that a feasibility study would look at is possible funding. There's actually funding out there that we are using right now on our east bench to, to study the debris basins up there. For a burned over condition to be able to help protect all the home. Some of that same emergency, or I'm sorry, watershed operations funding from NRCS USDA. Could potentially help us with the flood mitigation aspect of this. Doubling the size, for instance, would give us a great big hole in the middle of March or in April or May when we have a lot of runoff where. That they would pay for literally a hundred percent of the flood mitigation. And then we take care of recreational aspects of it, those types of things. So, there, there's all kinds of different nuances and, and different ways that this could go. But again, I go back to a feasibility study to, to put that together and, and maybe flush it out even more and, and give us more answers. And, and possible funding, because this isn't, this is a great idea, but it's not gonna be cheap and it's not gonna be done next year. So it's, it's something that, that is, is long-term. You know, again, you have to look at everything from, from operational standpoint, from the irrigation company, how they use their water. How we use our water, how we have to store it in the wintertime for, for type one water, for instance. And, and that could be a conflict potentially for flood mitigation on a big year. So, a, all of those things could be looked at through that feasibility study. Absolutely. They would give you some, some cost to be able to, to start budgeting and know how much that's gonna cost.
I, I think every day that you jump on this now is gonna save you weeks and months in, in the end. If you put it off. Mainly because the water's gonna be here before too long. We've only got one more option out for construction costs. After Van Con finishes. Isn't that right?
There's three to go.
There's three more reaches after.
Yeah, is there?
There's two in Sado and one in Combe de San.
Yeah, the, the one though from Louis Fields Arena to, to here is just gonna be one. Whatever they do to align those stars, that's up to CUP.
Right.
Well, you know, they've even talking of picking operations to dump excess water down here, which utilizes the reservoir even more. And that kind of thing, that's a big deal. Yeah.
I love this idea. I, I, I love it. I've loved it since I first heard about it several months ago. And, and I think I would like to see it forward with that first step.
So, I, I'm aware that Payson has done something similar within the last few years. They did a feasibility study. For a, a reservoir up, up Payson Canyon. So we could probably at least get a starting point from them and start looking at an RFP. And, and figuring out where to go from there if that's the council's direction. Again, this is gonna be a, a, a long-term process and we've got a lot going on right now, but we're happy to, to, to go as, as a council director.
Yeah, I agree with Betsy. I think it's a fabulous idea and whatever we need to do to start moving forward to get numbers and.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. By the way, Troy Peterson served on our planning commission as well. He's no stranger to the city. I can't get him to do any more with this, but I'm, I'm not giving up, so. And thanks, thanks to the family too. Appreciate you being here. Ah, reports. City Manager Reeves.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. It's great, great idea and insight. We appreciate your volunteerism. I just wanted to bring up a couple of, of things really quick and then answer any questions of the council. Number one, we wanted to get a little bit of direction from you with regard to something called the payroll tax holiday. Proposed by the federal government and our current administration. That federal tax holiday is basically a suspension of social security, that portion of our, of our payroll. And then we double it in the first quarter of the next calendar year. From a city staff perspective, we, we don't see that as beneficial to our staff. Because although they would have more money in their pocketbooks, immediately, they would be penalized next year. And so, a, a, a quick informational survey was put out to all the cities and we don't know of any city that wants to participate in that. As the council has, has just reviewed our financial report from our, our finance director during the work meeting. We don't see the negative impact that would, would necessitate that we, we would engage in that. So, we're not recommending it unless you direct otherwise. Okay, that being the case. The county line, we've been working, we've had a good meeting with Commissioner Lee. Norman and I, Mayor and I, on Friday, we had a meeting with the county surveyor and his heir apparent. He's about to retire and then the new one is coming on. And just meeting with every property owner, every political official that we can possibly think of to ensure that we are meeting everybody's concerns. We heard a few from the surveyor today that we, we think we can easily mitigate. And, and take their, their thoughts and ideas into consideration so that we can move forward with that. It's our goal to do so by the end of this calendar year. But things are moving forward there. I'll let Norm talk about the road projects coming up. The, with your approval this evening, the purchase of the properties will both close in the next, by the time you meet again. And, and so that's a good thing. We had a really exceptional meeting with our credit agency, our credit bond rating. S and P who does the financial analysis of our, of our community. We got hit with questions late in the day and provided answers early the next morning. And, and did so in a manner that I am really hopeful that we will be rated. Well, and that it will lower our overall. Interest rate when those bids come in and potentially save us a substantial amount over the duration of the bond. So that was good. I already mentioned the business stimulus program is kicking off today. A press release went out to our local papers as well. And everything is moving forward and seems smooth as can be with, I think, just general positive. Reception by the public. And we had our kickoff meeting with the, the design of the new city hall and. With our architectural firm, one of the last steps that we want to take as far as the preliminary work is concerned. Is get a CMGC construction manager, general contractor on board fairly early in the process to keep value engineering. And the cost as reasonable as we possibly can per square foot, working side by side with our architect. And that would be the last major effort of the council, other than approving a guaranteed maximum price of the actual. Construction, the building. And, and then one disappointing thing to note, the scheduling of the installation of the cameras for this room was delayed. And so it will not be next meeting that will have new cameras, but the first meeting of October. And I think that's it. Unless you have questions you'd like to meet in.
Any questions for Ben? When do we want to talk about the Bowens' questions? And how to answer their email? Counsel, did you receive the email he sent out today? I know, I know. So.
So, Mayor and Council and to the members of our, of our community, we have received. As, as elected officials, as appointed officials, we, we inherit, inherit. A lot of the work that we have before us from actions of prior councils. And someday people will inherit our work. We've talked about that in the future. And, and one of the issues is that historically, we have always been trying to catch up. And one of the biggest things that we've always been trying to catch up with is Summit Ridge. The approval of Summit Ridge, the annexation of Summit Ridge has necessitated water treatment. So, a water reclamation, so the whole sewer treatment plant, which, which caused issues for our community. It's, it's necessitated putting in the second access to Summit Ridge and all the work that has gone on there. And, and ironically, one of those things was supported by Meredith Graft and Reed and those who would support him and the other. The extension of the Summit Ridge parking brake was supported by Councilman Broadhead and the people who would support him there. And, and that's those two fundamentally opposed groups back in the sewer days, split by three votes. And yet, we as city staff work at the pleasure of the Mayor and Council. We're, we're here to do what you asked us to do, the very best that we can do it. Within the time and the resources and our ability. Now, one of the issues we have with foothill development is that way back in the annexation of Summit Ridge. It was annexed with a sliver of property going down the eastern side of the freeway. Then tying back and bringing all of Summit Ridge in. It brought in the Allen property. The annexation didn't incorporate the western side of the freeway, which is the Red Barn. That didn't come until much later. And so approvals of development rights out in that area took place well before our time. And then, of course, every single time new issues arise, such as in two thousand and seven, there was a. A bankruptcy and that property split. I think my, one of my very first meetings and where I've met our legal counsel, Mr. Ridge. Was in a settlement negotiation with Purple Sage. And, and the split of that property, because there was the Ellen Pond property that was dedicated to the city. But arguably, didn't come into the full ownership. There were some, some. Claims against that parcel. There was a split of the parcel between what was considered Purple Sage and Zine's Bank. And it required a whole settlement back at that time. And ultimately, it was picked up by Jimmy DeGraff Reed and Mr. Barton, Dennis from Payson. Who, who went in and brokered a deal to pick up the property from Zine's Bank and pick up the property from Purple Sage. And worked through the development rights to try to improve that whole area. Now, at that time, development would have required that they have two connection points. But there was nothing that would have required a frontage road. And so, Mr. Marker, Dennis Marker, our previous community development director and assistant city manager. Worked with, with Jimmy DeGraff Reed and worked with the city council at the time. And I was very sundry to the whole discussion, but worked with them to try to broker a deal. To bring in a frontage road and extend Highland Drive all the way to the south exit. Of course, we could only broker, broker with him for the property that he actually owned, which was through his property from Foothill Village to the south. He couldn't negotiate for things outside of the realm of his development, which is the Brewbreaker property and the Jimmy Evans property. And so the city has taken that on and we've worked with Jimmy DeGraff Reed. Requiring that he put in a secondary access to the south. That would need to be, that would had to be put in by gravel initially, so that they would, there would be a fire, secondary fire access. And then would be paved eventually when there was a hundred and fifty homes, that building permits that were constructed. Of course, the issue is people started using that, that fire department frontage road even before it was dedicated to the city. And so that could not have been a true technical secondary access for the people out there and open. Because people were utilizing it and if somebody had gotten in an accident, it would have been an accident on private property. And so, we, we have to work with what we have and the development agreement was in the long term. A short term, very difficult and I'm very empathetic to the Bowens and the issues that they've experienced. But in the long term, would provide a, a, a frontage road to that entire area. And it is now paid. And, and as soon as it was paved and dedicated to the city, we did hold that meeting to ask them to, to use it to the south. However, that was not the first time we asked our developers to use that frontage road. We had asked them over and over and over and over again. However, it became very difficult for them to do so for many reasons. One, taking heavy trucks down to the south and coming back up and trying to get speed going uphill with a heavy load. And the safety of getting onto the freeway was a challenge. Two, it's extra distance and time and cost to go that direction. And three, there was an excessive accessibility through a city street that we could not prevent. Yes, we can work to mitigate the impact, but we can't arbitrarily say that you can use the road, that you can't use the road. We, we don't have that authority. Even in contractual, we don't have that authority, so we have to work. And, and we recognize that it did increase the traffic at night south for that shorter period of time for the longer term benefit. Now, the Brew Baker piece was eventually picked up. The property changed hands again to, to the. DR Horton. And, and all the way through, we have been working in good faith, tried to bring that frontage road through. And that now frontage road is coming all the way up through the Brew Baker piece. There's only one more parcel that the city is working to acquire and that is with Mr. James Evans. Our engineering is complete. It's now being reviewed by UDA. And we will be able to sit down with Mr., with Mr. Evans and negotiate in good faith to acquire that. With the anticipation that that connection point, that intersection will be done in the spring of next year. We've always stated that. And, and, and yet, the ironic part of this whole thing is that. I, I was not here in two thousand when this was developed. I was not here when it went bankrupt. I did come on barely on board when negotiations were put in place to bring the frontage road on. Although it was not, it was, it was handled by others on our staff and I think handled properly to bring a frontage road in for the betterment of the whole, overall area. The one aspect where I feel like we could have improved is by maybe having, sitting down with the neighbors. And the developers in the same room and talking out the issues, because communication enhances all things. But there has to be fairness on both sides. We worked with them on a repeated occasion, but at the same time, Mrs. Bowen, on a repeated basis. Would drive out in front of these trucks, drive five miles an hour and make them sit behind her as she went down the road, down Canyon Road. All the way up one ninety-eight. She would flip them off. She would yell profanities at them. She would text me in the middle of the night. She would use profanities with me. She would call me all hours of the day. And you cannot work with people and ask them to come together and communicate and, and be parties in good faith. When you attack in that manner. And so every single time that we've tried to negotiate in good faith. We are undermined by the very efforts that have now created the situation that may have worsened for the Bowens in the first place. It takes people coming together. And I empathize with her. I, I wouldn't want those trucks coming by my home. And I understand and I, and I truly empathize, but at the same time. As staff, we have done everything that we can to try to make it a better process all the way through. And when the entire project is completed next spring, that frontage road will be there and it will lessen the impact. Today, it's now a cross street, a cross section between the south exit. And if you're gonna go to the north exit, you still have to put on. I know I went along on that, but.
In his email, he, he mentioned a few. Sections that he read from and didn't happen. So my question is, with the cards we've been dealt, with the history of everything that's gone in there. Did we do our best to lighten it?
The, the thing that we could have done better is get them all in the same room. But my fear honestly in that time is had we done that? You have to understand, we, we were trying to negotiate with Jimmy and then Salisbury and then BR. For them to do work outside of the scope of their project. In fact, today, we want to work with DR Horton, to have DR Horton put all of those improvements in on their own dime. And we will reimburse them with impact fees. How can we invite them to a room where we're trying to work with them in good faith and then have them blindsided and, and. Blindsided and and hit. In such a manner where. Where the attacks become personal and it goes beyond civility and it turns into personal attacks. I've had a personal tax on on at my home, being egged, being signs being put out front, being flipped off as people drive by. While I'm standing up there with my children and grandchildren. And attacks for our very nature and our character as people, when in fact. We didn't start the fire, it's always been burning since the world's been turning. My first council meeting was a two-two vote of the mayor and the council, but the mayor breaking the tie to approve a sewer treatment plant. Which again, system from this approval of Summit Ridge years ago, it was made in a tasty manner. So Mayor, in in all due respect, the way we handle it to do it right. Is when new annexations like the EKANS are coming through, that we require every study upfront. We know every dot every I cross every P, we know every improvement that's necessary. We negotiate for secondary accesses with supplement with sundry developments right up front. And we don't push things through in advance of our ability to to handle it. We can, we can run, but we can't run faster than our capability and. And I don't know a city of our size that has as many engineering and.
So Mayor, I to to go to your question, I I I can truthfully say that we did everything that we can possibly. We we've done more than that, I I know the focus has been on transportation. But we've added another water line in there, the developer and us added another water line in there that has improved their fire flow that they didn't have before. That that that's just one example beyond what's been discussed of of how we're trying to better the situation. Whether it's seen that way or not, that that is what we have tried to do, honestly, there there's not been any. There there's not been anything that we have not tried, again, countless phone calls and emails and and communication with the developer to to. Ask them to to do whatever they can do to be able to mitigate the the efforts, we have done that, yes.
Council, any thoughts?
I could just have one more thing to. I've never treated them disrespectfully. I stopped communicating when personally attacked beyond the point that's reasonably accepted. I understand I'm in a position of of I'm the point of your sphere. You guys set the the tone of the city and what you approve, and I say you, I mean you and past you, right, past council. Approved, sometimes public the public doesn't like it. But in the time that I've been here, I have in good faith, tried to do everything I can to implement the things that you would have us do. In such a manner, man and manner, that we better the city overall. And sometimes that has a negative impact, we're buying two homes for a new city hall. It has a negative impact, but it has a greater good. And I sit back and I go, Senate, Ben Reeves, Santa Claus City Manager, works at the pleasure of the mayor and council. I have never once voted for any high density, I have never once voted for one dollar being spent. That is your purview, that is your authority, I am the person who implements, now I make recommendations and I influence. But I have never voted for any of those things. And yet I have been entrusted over the past eleven years with five major areas. Those would be a foundation of good, strong public safety. In that time, we have, we have bolstered our public safety with a with a. Vehicle rotation program. We have created better equipment, better training, better salaries for our police officers. We have had two fire trucks and an ambulance, better training for our firefighters and EMS. We are the first fire fire and EMS department south of Provo to be paramedic certified. And we are the fourth safest city in the state of Utah, a city greater than ten thousand population. As of today, our public safety is phenomenal for a city of our size. We are phenomenal when it comes to our public works. We are one of the first cities in the state of Utah to have a fully pressurized irrigation system, fully metered. We reuse a hundred percent of our sewer fluid. We put forth an eighteen million dollar project with more than six million dollars worth of grants. So that we can put that, so that we can have that water resource in the second most arid state. We've added water tanks, booster pump stations, so we can move water from any area pound to any other area town. And if there is an outage, it's not going to torpedo us like would have in the past. And we've added a a secondary access to the Summit Ridge development, which was a huge liability for the city. Only one access point for all of those homes out there. And we inherited all that. We have done phenomenal things for our leisure services and our community development. We built soccer park, we remodeled the old Public Works building into a recreation center. We've expanded them Apple Valley Elementary School into a gym. And we have expanded every single one of our parks and made betterments from from the North Orchard Cove where we added additional. Basketball courts and and a second tennis court and additional field space to the new jazz court that's going in here in town. And my own kids helped to re-roof the the bathroom. At the Centennial Park, recide the ends and put the items on there with Eagle Projects and put a fire pit on the east end. So community and we've enhanced our overall offering eight of the last ten years rodeo of the year. Leisure services, we are invested. We are also doing a fantastic job with our community development. We are growing like crazy, the growth wave has hit us. And yes, we've had a tremendous amount of of high density housing come in, but we also out shout sign that by three quarters, seventy-five percent. Is new single family home construction within our community, that's not high density, that's coming toward community. And whether you are brand new to our community or or you've been here since nineteen sixty-four, I remember Merida Graff Reed saying. I moved into nineteen sixty-four and I'm still the new guy. People feel like they, when they move in, that they have ownership and they do, you have the same rights of ownership as someone who's been there their entire life. And we need to respect the views of all. But we've also worked to widen our main street three times and a fourth one is coming. We brought millions of dollars of grants in to widen it. And we've made it so that our our grocery store complex thirty-two acres is moving forward. Our agritourism is being planned by USU and our business park and with the extension of the Summit Ridge is now prime to be able to be forward. And lastly, we have enhanced our administration. We've put in, that's our fifth area that I'm responsible for. We're enhancing our transparency, we're putting better cameras in, we're doing everything that we can. To enhance that with a new finance director. And you know what? All of that has been done with keeping our administration budget flat. Every department of the city has increased in size and scope and our administration is flat. We have not raised the cost of any of our residents, it has just been lower than overall growth of the city. So I, in all five areas of the city, we have prospered and we have benefited. And our our financial position is stronger than it's ever been. And yet I am constantly attacked for being the change agent that you guys want me to be. And now that has translated into attacks personally on my my wife. Who, by the way, does the city website. Not the website, but the content management and the software. She has. She she was not hired by me, she was hired by the city staff or by the, it should be by the city council. I stepped out of the room, I recused myself, it was seal bids. Councilman Miller was there at the time, council member Jets was there at the time. Bible vote to put her in, her rate was less than half of the next person up. So it has saved the city thousands of dollars in that period of time since two thousand, April of two thousand and fourteen. Never once has she raised the her rates, not even when cost of living has gone up for every other aspect of the city, she has not. The only time she's taken on additional work is for things that have been the betterment to our community, such as the. What do you love about Santa Claus video photo contests, the calendar, the. Volunteer of the month, the. Employee of the month, all council directed to enhance and better our community. And has been nothing but attacked for it. And and in that period of time, she's raised eight kids, four grandchildren and put herself through school. And so the attacks on on me and my wife are personal and it's not right. And and the work that we've put forth means something to this community. Eleven years of of service be constantly attacked. For different things when all we've tried to do is provide dignity to those who had to step away, such as. Past council members who who had some impropriety issues that were in question and had to step away. We gave them opportunity to do so with dignity instead of being. Destroyed in the in the public. We've had that with past employees as well. Am I perfect? No. But hey, I make mistakes all the time and there's been mistakes through this, through my eleven years and and the Bowens are one, the Jets are another. There have been mistakes all the way through, but it's my heart and soul here, absolutely. Have I dedicated countless hours, nights, weekends. Providing service to the community, absolutely. And I'm the cheapest employee that you have over forty hours. Doesn't cost you one extra penny for me to send you an email in the middle of the night on Sunday or a Saturday and I jokingly say that. I just want you to know, I love Santa Claus. And I don't look backwards. The people who are the naysayers of this community are constantly looking over their shoulder, trying to remember the good old days. That get weren't all that good. When you really consider some of the aspects, some of the changes that we have made to better our community, such as having the irrigation system. Such as having better fleets, having better parks, these are looking forward, these are having vision. And I guess I I will get up my report now because I'm only have ten minutes and I will exceed that, but. But Mayor, we're doing everything, we really can.
That's all I wanted, was a yes or no. Thank you. I, yes, I got a yes out of that. Yes.
Is it all right if I read an email that I sent today?
Go ahead.
I received this email. It was on to the job description of the city manager. That was just generic pulled off of me. And my response was this. Each city has its own unique job description for the city manager because depending on the part of government the city has. The manager will have different responsibilities. In Santa Claus, the city manager does advise council by offering facts and data. The manager does not make decisions about policy. The council does that. However, the city manager does take the blame for many decisions which in fact they did not decide. I would not want that job. In Santa Claus, the city manager leads the staff on a day-to-day basis, but the mayor is the CEO of the city. The manager handles more of the day-to-day administrative items that the mayor and council delegates to him. All policy decisions are made by the council. I for one am thankful that I can go to staff to ask for information and guidance to learn since I am an educator, not a professional city administrator. Then each council member chooses for themselves how they want to vote to get that information. Our staff members are very helpful and supportive when I want to learn how I can about the issue. I believe that the situation with foothill village was a result of decisions made and approved by previous council. And then a change in community development directors right at the time of agreement. What was agreed to fell through the gap, it shouldn't have, but it did. I understand that you have been so frustrated and want someone to blame for the situation. I would feel the same way, in this case, this has not been solved. If I could accept the blame and fix it, I would. I'm sure you can also understand why Ben stopped communication. When he started receiving very inappropriate and unkind messages against him personally. He has to do a lot of things in his job, but continued abuse from residents shouldn't be part of the job description in any city. I don't get on Facebook anymore because of unkind and hurtful and many times untrue and incomplete posts, I shut it off. Ben has that same right, just like you have the right to have your understanding of the development agreement upheld and the right to express your frustration in appropriate ways. The city council failed to address the issue quickly and thoroughly enough, we shouldn't have acted sooner. I hope we can move forward learning all together from this. And I just think that time is far past for us. To stand up and take responsibility for the decisions that are made in this city because it's not been fucked. He doesn't make those decisions, we do, and for us to just sit silently. And let him in any abuse. It's unacceptable. We all asked for these jobs. The residents gave us this responsibility. And one of those responsibilities is to stand up and speak the truth. And the truth is that we are damn lucky to have the staff that we have. And and. If I were in a job and I were taking that kind of abuse day in and day out. I can say right now, I would bail. I would hate it, I would hate every minute of it. And he doesn't do that because he loves what he does. But again, being abused and thrown under the bus repeatedly is not in his job description. And it shouldn't be, and it's our responsibility to stand up and and protect that.
Thank you. I agree.
Not sure how follow that, but we'll, so roads, street projects will be kicking off here shortly and finishing up by October thirty first. We've got contracts signed now and moving that forward. We do have the EWP which you, the the council approved tonight. That project, that work will be completed prior to December seventh. That's going to be something that that is going to be a fast track. And the county will, I I believe the the last. Again, in my memo, I talked about that the county will be contracting, the city will be participating financially. Up to the amount that was approved in the in and and what has been budgeted. That work will include stream restoration for protecting our street, our 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 spring water line coming down the canyon. Getting out, I think it's about thirty-five thousand yards of of soot and silt and gravel and. Debris that has come down and filled up the debris basin, one of the, one of the things that we were going to do is that that debris basin will be. Restored so that it can have some percolation in there to to help handle some of that high water. We actually have water in that debris basin clear into July, I think, and and that's not normal, but it's because it's been silted over and. So that's one of them, the East Side Park and then also the Cricket Canyon area up by Spring Lake will be remedied as well. Short-term measures to to restore and and help us protect from the the aftermath of the fire. The indication from from scientists and the Forest Service is that a a three to five year period makes it so that the the the. The vegetation can restore itself enough that it will help to protect us from from those debris flows like what we've had. We did meet with the county today and had a good meeting again of the county surveyor and and moving that forward to get exhibits and. And entity plats to to do the county line adjustment, so that's going along famously. And just trying to keep up with with development inspections and and our GIS and everything that goes along with that to to make sure that we're we're. Having high expectations and getting good, good quality from our contractors, development contractors. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Ramon?
I I could say a lot more, but it was taken care of today, correct?
Thank you.
I I would add one thing. To Ben's point. Over the last six to eight weeks, I've been working fifty to sixty hours a week minimum. And most of the time emailing and texting and doing other things far beyond the hours that I've worked as well, so. We we are doing everything that we can, we're working our tails off and and trying to do all the very best that we can for the city.
Thank you. Jason, still there, you want to report?
I'm still here, so. I don't really have anything for you to report on on the building inspector position or the general plan, those things are still in process, so. Unfortunately, don't have any news for you there, but we're we're working through those processes still. I I met with and spoke with the the contractors, Arno Construction for the construction of the plaza there on the corner of of Main Street and four hundred east. As you can see, the pedestal is is going vertical. And I was informed earlier this week that. You would start to see the pergola structure go up as soon as Thursday, so. You'll really start to see that plaza come together. I think we are also anticipating other things surrounding the grocery store to to move forward as well. There's just a lot of things happening in the world right now, a lot of. Things that that we aren't necessarily privy privy to when it comes to to a private business and and how they move forward, but. We're excited to see all the economic development and all the the progress moving forward on that side. That's mostly what I have for you tonight. Yeah, unless you have any questions for me, just a lot going on.
Well, thank you, Jason, appreciate you staying with us.
Of course.
All right. Councilman Hathaway, do you have anything to report?
Uh, nothing to report, but I'd like to make a comment if I can. And I know that you always tease me about when I bring up ninety-one, first time I was on the city council, ninety-one to, to current today. I have nothing but total admiration for our staff and every department. I've had the opportunity to watch Santaquin from ninety-one to now. Not only being on the council that I have, being on the ambulance and fire and, and always being at least involved. I've watched Santaquin come a long ways on not a lot of money. We've done a lot of things and that's because we've got dedicated staff. It goes out and bust their butt to get this stuff done. I just want to thank each and every one of you for all the work you do. Thank you.
Glenn, you're in.
Yeah, I'll stand up and say the same thing. Uh, in my thirty-plus years living in Santaquin and more than two years, almost three years on the city council, I've not had any reason to mistrust our city staff or our city manager. Appreciate what you do. I, I love what you do. Way to train the staff that work with you and the city council.
You're next.
I, I want to acknowledge, um, Planning Commissioner Matt O'Callaghan here for giving us tonight. And, um, thank the Planning Commission for their work and their answer for the problem that we use on the step over the last several months. And, um, and thank council and mayor and staff support for their support on that proposal. And, um, I received a letter from the Utah League of Cities and Towns that they have partnered with the National League of Cities um, to offer a service line warranty program, which means in this letter it's explained that, um, when the, you know, at the edge of a, of a homeowner's property, the lines, the water sewer line that then go under their yard, their house are there on their property that they're responsible for. And, um, this service line warranty program doesn't cost the city anything to participate in it. It just makes the, the warranty program service available to our residents. Um, and my next door neighbors three times in three years have had to dig up their front yard because of leaks um, in their water pipes and their, their meter was just spinning and spinning and spinning. And thankfully the city started sending letters when they noticed that our engine be high though after a couple of months saying, you might want to check for a leak. But I think this would be a really good thing to investigate and, um, and explore, especially if it doesn't cost the city anything at all to, to join in partnership. But then our residents get the benefit if they choose to, um, to purchase the warranty. And, and then it covers, it says in the letter that, um, it's up to eighty-five hundred dollars per occurrence is covered. And, um, it includes education for homemaking, for homeowners, um, reduction of local officials frustration, revenue share component to help drive dollars back to the city. No cost for Utah cities and towns to participate, affordable rates for residents. And that, um, thirteen municipalities, including Salt Lake City and the city of Orem currently offer the program which saves Utah homeowners over five million dollars in repair costs over the past three years. So, would you like to, to explore that?
We've seen this before.
But I don't, this is the first time I've ever heard of it. And just because my next door neighbor has had such bad experiences.
I know who your neighbor is, yeah.
So I would like to learn more about it. If you already know more about it, you can talk about it at another time.
Um, I've received the same letter, the mayor received the same letter and had it to me as well. Um, it is, it is a marketing campaign where they would like to market to our residents to pay for this insurance, but it's a good insurance and it can save residents a tremendous amount of money.
Okay.
We just haven't had the time to pick that up and run with it yet, but we would certainly like to, to further investigate it and bring it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think I said it down today.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes, a few things. So Beautification Board, we met, we're meeting again this week. It's going well. I emailed Ben. I'll talk about that separately about getting an email set up. I don't know if that's possible or not. Um, we've ordered signs, so it's moving along. We're going to have it in the newsletter and on the Facebook page. And, and the signs were really cheap, I think like thirty bucks or something. So.
So if you have receipts, file means.
Yes, I said keep your receipts and then I bring you guys. So they look good. I can send you guys an email. We're meeting again on Thursday. Um, yeah, beyond that, I mean, everybody echo what everyone said. I told Betsy this before. I don't know that I've told Ben directly. Um, but it's, or the mayor, anybody else in here. But prior to being on council, it's, I don't know, it's really easy to sit back as a community member and be like, well, I do it differently or judge or whatever. So when you're in the middle of it and you truly understand what's going on, it's totally different. So that being said, I do try to tell that to people if I ever hear stuff and like, look, why has it definitely been opened? I can see where I was like wrong in certain areas and I've learned a lot just in the short time I've done it. So kudos to all of you. And. So. So I mean, yeah. We don't always have to agree, but we get along and I respect everybody. And, and I respect you a lot. I know that you're just doing the best.
Thank you.
I respect. I don't, I don't have anything to, to report on, um, stuff, stuff going forward with the rest of the city. Of course, same thing. I see it, see it first time. It works a lot. We get it. We're appreciative. I know it's, I know it's hard, but I appreciate it. City side and on the person side as well.
We're, we're just honored to serve. It's really what it.
We know that. We know that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you go, I got.
Okay.
Uh, I'm noticing, I noticed I've talked to Nick about this with the lights on.
The lights on the Walter Callaway Fields are on on Sunday nights.
Oh.
And I, I know we had that issue not a couple of years ago. Is, is people able to turn them on themselves or? Yeah, check that.
I, I noticed one night during the week they're on till five to eleven.
Yeah.
One night. I actually sit on the deck and watched them go off. So I know exactly when the time was, but yeah, I thought, what are they doing on this late?
Your norm eats gives on now.
Yeah, well, I was doing more than that, but, okay, um. Because of the confusion or at least my incapability of controlling the, the public forum tonight. I forgot to have Aaron read the three emails that were sent. And so would you do that now, Aaron? So we can make sure that they're in public record.
Okay, I'll just read the two emails since the Bones got to, uh, speak in person. The first is from Heather Stevenson. Uh, this comment is about the dog park that is coming to Santaquin. She said, I just came from Spanish Fork Dog Park where we commute from Santaquin several times a week. It is quite a drive though and sometimes crowded. So when we heard that Santaquin was going to get one or two, we got excited. Almost all of our neighbor, neighbors have dogs as well. And just like pickleball, dog parks are trending. Here's the thing, we gotta have some grass for this park. That's what makes the Spanish Fork Park so great. Grass and trees for shade keep the pups and have people happy. Ask some of the regulars there if they ever heard of a dog park that was gravel. It was a big no, except one guy who said they have a dog park in Sandy, Utah that is half grass, half gravel. People go to the gravel side in the winter when the grass aside is muddy. That makes sense. And if Santaquin had one that had both grass and gravel, we would use it. If it is entirely gravel, however, I know that we would not bring our dog there as the gravel would be really hard on their paws. If you haven't seen it yet, here's an excellent article on dog park developments, uh, and she provides a link. Uh, she says, thank you. Uh, the second comment is from Jody Reed. She said, dear mayor and city council members, thank you for your work for our community. I'm very happy to see the revisions of the city website is on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Some of the issues that need to be addressed are the search function. Yes. And the excessive number of screens that must be navigated in order to find information. It is remarkable to me that in a search I did a few days ago, an outdated zoning map rather than the current one was what came up as the top result. It also takes eight clicks after landing on the homepage to get to the agenda or minutes of meeting. Businesses also have a great deal of interaction with the city. We are attempting to attract businesses to our community. It seems that a functional and user-friendly website experience would help them to feel like they're coming to a place that cares about the experiences people have interacting with the city. On another topic, I understand the city council and others' meeting agendas are fluid and cannot be determined very far in advance. But posting them with such extremely short notice as we see currently makes it difficult for citizens to be meaningfully involved. If notices were even posted on Friday instead of Monday, for example, it would give citizens time to carefully consider the issues to be discussed. They could then provide thoughtful input that would possibly help city decisions feel less arbitrary and undoubtedly lead to less criticism of city officials. It is sad to discover that hardworking city officials feel beat up by citizens. And this certainly seems indicative of a lack of communication. Thank you for your careful consideration of these matters. Sincerely, Jody Reed. Thank you.
So Mayor, I can speak to the dog park that they're talking about, uh, and it is about a, yeah.
If, if I may, I've already, uh, talked to that resident. Uh, we had a similar comment, in fact, the exact same comment of Planning Commission. I've already talked with her, shown her the, the, the plans for the dog park and she's happy. So that, that comment's really been addressed.
But for the council's, uh, understanding, it is about a fifty-fifty split between gravel and grass. That, and that is at the direction of the, of the city staff to be able to have that.
Okay.
So what can we, can we post it? Can we start posting stuff on Friday? Like just try to make that like a, a goal so that way it's not an issue that's brought up again. You know what I mean?
We are.
Yeah. I know we tried, but if we can like.
And, and I really do need to, uh, see the position that I'm talking about. And guys, I'm going to, policy, I'm going to, one of my priorities was to be able to set up business day.
Yeah.
Three business days prior.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that'll do a lot for both the public and for staff.
So I got an email today from, uh, Mag and they say they have five million dollars um, for Utah County Cares Nonprofit Grant Program. So if you're a nonprofit and you would like to apply, you have till Friday to do it. Okay? Also, uh, Ben mentioned our, he and I's meeting with Commissioner Lee this week. Uh, we both walked out of his office and looked at each other and said, I can't believe they agreed to that.
It was a great meeting.
It was a good meeting. And, uh, yeah, he was, he was very cordial and, and agreed with our, our thoughts on changing the county, county line. So it's good to have him on board. Also with the EK's annexation, I know we talked a little bit about it. Your staff did tonight. Um, they're getting frustrated and I'm getting phone calls and, uh, uh, I know they're working, they've got the studies done. Uh, at least they're working on getting them what redlined and, and straightened out. Uh, they still don't have an agreement with, with Rob Borlacker at Summit Ridge yet. Anyway, that's where we're kind of at there, but they're pushing still. So, um, we'll see what the, what the studies say and go from there. Anything else to say on that? Ben or? That's all I have. Um, I look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll know that.
Wow.
Motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilmember Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I don't need to ask for any of.